On our expenditure report, the constable services were already in the pool. It's gonna go until.
So the constable, most of his money is generated through grants. So we get a grant reimbursement for that.
Okay, so under that word says negative, that's not true to form then, that means we're, it's still private.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent, the grants are, the two grants that he uses are a hundred percent reimbursable. So it's money in, money out.
Yeah, that'll get refunded back when we get one of those grants, just goes into our line. That happens every year, twice, there's two grants, it's pretty much self pays for us. Now, on the night of the town meeting. You know, you're gonna be there for that and it's, and you'll give a full explanation why. It's kind of like that because a lot of people want, they understand, they can, you know, they pretty much deal with it. And so, you know, we really explain it out quite well, you know, say yes or no. And that's the way, that's the way it'll turn out, I'm open with yes. But the town does need a rescue.
It's the next step that they do.
We'll have to cross that bridge when we come through, because they're not an LLC, they are their own.
I think, I think we need to know the answer, because I bet people are gonna ask that question whether, at the meeting, they're gonna say, and what happens if we voted down?
Because all we do is submit, we don't know what would happen, what your plan would be.
That's a nice thought, I'm sure that's gonna be a question asked, like, what's gonna happen if it goes down?
Well, that's, that's also our wonder too, because, I mean, if you guys, if they do choose to vote it down and we don't have funding, and we can't, we'll sustain it as long as we can sustain ourselves, but if you choose to go to another option, I mean, if you start searching and see what other towns are gonna charge, Fairhaven's getting fifty-eight dollars per capita.
Can I make a suggestion for you?
Of course, of course.
When you come, that budget that you gave us, if you can, like, hand that or show it somehow on a projector.
We talked about that, we talked about having a picture board type thing.
Because people will say, well, if we just get rid of that, why doesn't the town take it over? It's like six hundred and fifty, seven hundred thousand to run it.
I know.
I mean, that has to be explained so that they'll just say, ooh.
Yeah, we were having that discussion at our board meeting just before we came over, as to, to explain it out to people as to what the overall cost and what the effect is in their, their actual taxes per year to them, the increase is gonna be, which, when we span it out, it's minimal. It looks like it's a lot because it's a big number all at once, but when you spread it out over the year.
Spread it out over the year.
It's, it's, it's not.
Like five cents on a hundred or something like that.
Yeah, and the other question they have is, why is it not always just Polkney that's answering the calls? And, you know, sometimes we're at another call for the person who may have called just before them, and someone else has to answer that call, you know, unfortunately, two people can't, people can't be in two places at one time.
But that'll be a good statistic for you to bring up, I'm gonna ask you, with this money, how much are you going to give to Polkney? Because a lot of people call, you're not the one, like Grandville or some other places come, they're gonna wanna know, how many calls, how many do you, you know, take care of? So I'm sure that's gonna be a question that's gonna be asked, yeah, asked, asked.
Yes.
So lots of times visual is a perception, and they don't understand the whole circle.
Right.
So, a good explanation and a good understanding of what's going on.
We had that discussion before we came over.
That's what we need to do. That's what we need to do, thank you. I won't be here, I'll be in the Carolinas at a funeral. That, I'm a very, very good friend of mine that passed away. So I will not be here then, of all days.
But it might be good to make sure they know who's on, 'cause I know that's a question people ask me, and I'm like, oh, I'm not sure. Who's on the rescue squad, who's in charge, has it, has it changed? It's changed, that might be a good thing for you to have, between the hand or something here is the people contact there.
It's also gonna be listed in the town report, we put it in the town.
Oh yeah, to make sure everybody knows that. But there will be people that will say, I don't have good access to it if it's not mailed out. So if you did have, you know, a listing of it and you could hand it out to those that asked that night, that would be a big help too, really.
I can also bring a copy of our report that we're gonna put in the town report too.
Yep, bring copies, just in case, just, just in case.
Sometimes people don't read the town report.
No.
They get it, it's on the calendar and it's in the trash.
A lot of stuff's in there, yeah.
But it is a substantial increase and a good explanation will, will go a long way. Okay?
Are you fully staffed right now, or are you still working on?
For the most, our daytime hours for the most part are, we have a couple days during, on the weekends that, you know, nobody seems to like to work the weekends. And we get coverage during the night, people only wanna stay the night, but we do get the calls. Our call volume has, our dropped calls has substantially diminished from where we were. So we're down to maybe six calls that we don't answer, but a lot of times it's a second call that it's, we're not answering.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So where we were at ten fifteen in the beginning of this whole process, we're now down six, and we're hoping that our PDMs will start to pick up more, more of our call volume at night.
So let me ask you a question, if you get called out and if they just need to be picked up, they don't need a ride, do you get to bill out anything?
We do now.
You do?
With the state of Vermont, with Medicaid and some of the private insurances, they do allow us to bill. We don't get our full fee, we do get a partial fee, so we are allowed to get some money for it. At least recoup some of the gas money and some of the hourly.
Yeah.
But it's, it's better than nothing, there was a point where we were doing it, I don't wanna say as charity, but as we will, that we'd go and pick the patient up and put them back in bed and, and check them and make sure, and offer them the ride to the hospital, if that's what they felt. But, the problem is, is that you have two elderly people at home. Mrs. Falls, she doesn't wanna leave Mr. at home because she's his caregiver, so she refuses to go to the hospital. Or Mr. Falls and Mrs. is home alone, vice versa. So that's what the problem is with a lot of the elderly, because fifty, I think it's fifty-six percent of our payer mix here in Polkney, or in the state actually, is Medicare. And your elderly, your elderly people do not, fifty-seven percent is Medicare, and your elderly people don't wanna go to the hospital because for fear that they're not gonna be able to come back home to a significant other.
They don't wanna be stuck in Genesis.
So they'll, they'll opt for the RMA, the refusal of medical attention, to stay home.
Yep. Yep, you'll have good explanations, and thank you very much.
I'm working hard on this for the last few months.
Thank you, good, I really hope it pays off. A good explanation and good understanding and people will, will give a yes or no.
As long as you can explain it, they usually are.
Very good.
They can see the perception of it.
I think if they have, you know, I think it's great that you're gonna get handled, when they have something visual and they go after questions, they feel like they have.
Right, if something tangible to grasp onto.
I think that's good.
Once we get it in the budget, you know, then it stays in, and that's where we start year after year after year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else on the general government budget? No?
Three thousand, that's good.
That's three thousand less, so it'll be a little less than fifteen point nine five percent increase. Not much, but it'll be just a whisker, be nine, nine four or something, you know.
Well, if they don't get the voter approval, they could get the forty-two thousand?
That's in the budget. If they don't get the voter approvals, then we'll come back, we'll sit down and see what the next line is, and see if we can get it out again with another figure. Doesn't have to be forty-two, it could be a different number, and see if we can go from there. You know, it's not, you're dead no one, you know? We'll come back and keep working to see what we can do. And maybe even have some type of a meeting to figure out what people are looking at, for help.
The plans.
But it's not gonna be before you're done. You're just gonna keep trying. Okay?
Thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you very much. I will zoom the meeting, but I won't.
What's, what's your name?
Rachel Lynch.
Rachel Lynch?
Yep.
Okay, just for the record.
Yep.
I'm so happy you're doing that.
You're very happy you won't, you won't be here.
No, I, I don't mind being here, that's a good night, actually, a lot of people learn a lot. Okay, the highway department budget?
That stayed the same than what, as what we looked at last time. I did add a little bit on the uniforms, that's, I didn't think I changed on this one.
And this should, in our expenditure show that we're really behind on that too, do we have grant money or? Uh, what is that?
Um.
I know that's a big construction with like, four and four and we're already minus thirteen, like worries me that, but that was summer constructions, that we had a lot of extra things this year.
We did, we did have Omega Covert replacement that we got a grant for.
You know, vehicles and equipment or, or another. Yeah, that was a big difference in those two, but we kind of pushed it a little bit in there.
Hopefully that'll go down over time, as we get new vehicles.
And the roads get taken care of, and those even went to, they're so much better now than they have been. Hopefully, those might look like some questions.
Is everybody okay? Any questions on the highway department budget? We got a meeting next Monday night, Paul, these have gotta be approved and by, and when do you have to have them in by?
I have to have everything to the printer by the next Friday.
By this Friday or?
By week twenty-six. So I'll have the morning for you to execute our Monday meeting next Monday.
Next Monday we'll vote on it, take them home, study them, if you like them. And then Monday we'll come in and we'll vote on it at the beginning of our regular meeting. We'll put it on the agenda. Everybody okay with that? They look pretty good there, quite a bit, but everything else is doing this, this is all with just a three percent increase in salaries. We didn't, we've been increasing salaries substantially the past two, three years, to try and catch up with everybody that is surrounding us. So this year we throttled that back. Because we do want the budget to pass, and we really hope that the rescue line are passed.
Could someone make a motion to adopt the agenda?
No.
Oh, no.
I can make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I just got right into it, I'm sorry. No, thank you. I got right into it, I was excited. Okay. And I guess that's it, or if that's it, then we wait till Monday?
Yeah.
And we hear a motion to adjourn this budget meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn the budget meeting? It's twenty seconds.
Second, all in favor? To carry. All right, now you can get up and start your line. All right, we'll meet in the, at six thirty, at six thirty. Thank you, thank you very much. We have called this meeting to order, if we could do the pledge of allegiance again? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Sue, you go, going up like.
I don't know that loud, huh?
I do too.
It's not good.
Sorry. Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Yeah, I would make a motion to adopt next agenda. Go ahead, second?
Second.
Your second, do you wanna add to the agenda before we?
Yeah, can we just add a thing to put up, actually just have a brief discussion we can put on next week, um, Polkney Food Shelf?
Okay, that would be under transit, any other lawful business?
We're going to discuss this, this agreement with, yeah.
That would probably be an executive session. Do I hear a second with the?
How second that?
With the add to the Polkney Food Shelf discussion? Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes of eight, uh, twelve eighteen twenty-three, and twelve eighteen twenty-three special budget meeting, we had them back to back like we did this evening? Will you give a second there? Any comments or questions by the board on the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. A road report, Joe's probably out and about. So, we'll get a better report from him, uh, next Monday's meeting, correct? And know that they have been very busy, and a lot of wind damage around the area. Community development?
Sarah's joining us on Zoom.
Okay. Hi Sarah.
You're muted, Sarah.
Sarah, you're muted. It's like that Geico commercial.
It says you're not muted, but can't hear you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Um, all right, so I have a, a quick update tonight, um, just to let the board know what I've been working on. So, the end of December, I spent, uh, working on closing out that old Borat grant, and the MRF assessments for the town owned properties, which took place on the eighteenth. Thanks for everyone for all their help with that. Um, I don't know when we'll receive the reports, but I would guess it would be within the next six weeks or so. Um, so I am also, oh, I'm, I'm doing some year end reporting right now, uh, for the town report, and then also doing some reporting with PDRC for their annual downtown reinvestment statistics that are due to the state by the end of January. Um, and right now I'm working on identifying upcoming grant opportunities, mostly uh, for the town trails report and the recommendations that were there, um, relative to the town garage. And I also visited this, the high school and met with, um, the facilities manager, uh, the principal, and, uh, the resource, uh, person there to look at that site for potential generators for, um, grants that may be available for that, and keeping an eye out for some housing development grants. Um, and so that, I don't, I don't know if this is my news or Paul's news, Paul's news to tell you, but we did get the grant for the merger, um, planning. Yeah, so that's good news, and I think, um, for next week, I could put together, you know, Paul and I could talk a little bit further about, um, you know, how we can help the board, but it will be in the board's, uh, court, in the trustee's court to develop a committee to guide the merger, um, development. But I, there is a scope of work that was submitted with the, uh, grant application, and it has a timeline for the overall process for that project, so, um, we can get that to the board and, and start from there.
So we need to get, we should probably have a meeting with the town and the village together on this to form a committee, it probably sounds like ASAP.
Um, I, I think, you know, we can wait until next Monday and figure out an approach from there. Um, I'm sure Paul has an idea, has a few ideas on how to tackle this as well, so we haven't had a chance to really talk it through.
All right, so we'll, we'll wait on that then, and then eventually get a, a committee together, well, fairly soon, to start this. Now, your generator, Sarah, can I ask you, did you, that's a generator, that's a grant for that, for the high school? Are you also looking for one for the senior center?
So, the, there was a grant opportunity that was identified in December that we weren't ready to, to go for, because we didn't have the information needed. So, um, essentially what we're doing is assessing what type of generator is needed for those locations, so that when the grants are available or a new grant comes along, that we'll be ready to make the application then.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just, a little, a little preliminary work.
Okay.
But that's it for my report.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah.
Does anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Did you wanna report, Sarah, on the, um, the Collins Point application at all, or?
Um, they, well, I think I might wait until next Monday to, to give an update on that too. I have a meeting scheduled this week that will provide a little bit more information on what's going on with that grant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Absolutely.
All right, town managers report?
So I did, I was gonna talk about the merger, so thank you for, for that, Sarah. Um, we did put out the RFP for the flood study. Um, I haven't received yet any proposals, but I'm hopeful that we will get some proposals. I just want the board to know that that, that went out there and has been advertised at the state level.
And that's just to look at the scope?
Hmm, yeah, it's a, it's a request for an engineering firm to, to do the scoping study and determine whether or not there's alternatives that can be, um, realized or proposed to alleviate the flood, um, the flood zone. Not only looking at, does the bridge cause a problem, but is there anything else we can do, um, to address the issue?
Mm-hmm, good. Hopefully somebody will get on that by the summer.
Um, I do have, I do have it under other business here, but there is a liquor and tobacco license for the Stewart shops that, uh, the clerk has provided to me to get the board's approval for.
We need, we need a motion for that.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion to, um, approve the liquor and tobacco licenses for the Stewart shops?
They always stand liquor and tobacco, yeah?
Yeah.
I would make, make that motion to approve the Stewart's liquor and tobacco.
Second, any comments or questions? What's that? All right, we got a motion. Any comments or questions by the board on the liquor license for Stewart's? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Do I have to all sign it, or just, um, Jeff?
I think you just shot it, don't you, Jeff?
I think so.
Just one. So sign it before you go, please.
Yeah.
Um, I think the board knows I'm, I'm in my crunch time now for the town report. I'm gonna have it to the printer by the end of next week. So I'm doing my, what I usually do is chasing everyone down for their reports that are incorporated in the town report. Um, yeah, so, um, that's consuming a lot of my time right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I haven't called to say hi lately.
Um, other than that, I know Cheryl, you wanted to talk about, did you wanna talk about the Polkney Food Shelf tonight, or did you wanna just talk about it next week?
Well, we can talk about it next week if we have a lot going on, I just wanted to bring it up, a lot of people have approached me, so I think we need to think about it, because they do not have their five oh one C three, if I get that right?
Yeah.
They haven't had it for a long time, Jonas and I, um, printed off everything years ago to them, but people have approached me, they don't wanna put donations there anymore, and I think that's part of our, it's a wonderful thing. We give them the snowbirds, and we need to figure something out, 'cause it reflects our town, so I think we need to put it on and have a plan to help them or whatever it is we need to do.
Does the town own the food shelf?
No.
No, we just give them free space.
They were a nonprofit organization, um, but, as I understand it, they let that.
They let that go.
For a few years, yeah.
Yeah, for a few, a few, five years.
Yeah, it's been a lot longer.
They have to file taxes every year to keep it. As the seniors, seniors center has to do.
Yeah, Legion Rotary, they all do, yeah.
And when you file it, there's a certain line item, and then you get approval to continue paying the taxes.
But as I understand it, the, the, it's sort of a skeleton board.
I was told they really don't have a board, there's three people that have been working there, that, that was so-called the board, but a lot of people have left, so I'm not sure. Um, my concern was, was there a board meeting to talk to about it, but I know before Jonas passed away that we met, have the printout stuff, and we printed everything they needed to do.
Can you bring that to the next meeting?
Yeah, sure, it's on the website, it's just for my, yeah, I don't even sure if that's an avenue they can go on anymore, because it's been so lax. They might have to reenter as a different entity now.
They have to apply for.
But I think as a different, I think as a different, yeah, entity, and I don't know what they'd have to, if they'd have to pay back, or if they can do it as a different entity, I don't know. I just know it's our building, they're, they stay there. Um, a lot of people can't donate because of it, or choosing not to, I should say, because it's. So I feel like maybe we need to get more involved in it.
So, so Carol, is the senior citizen, the Bible being?
And I guess apparently, I don't know, eight, nine, ten years ago, we lost it for a period of time also.
Right.
And it was quite the to-do, but we got it back and we're all good.
Yeah.
Since I've been treasurer.
I just think this kind of laps, I know we, we printed it all out, um, and I, I know, 'cause I found the packet when I was in my office, and I know Jonas, I filled out the, the whole thing, but I don't know if there's so much of a lapse that you can't do it again, you have to open up as a different entity.
There's penalties too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to pay.
But I think you either pay or you open up, you pay as a different, it's not the same kind of. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure, I just know we were doing like the research, trying to help them out. So I just think because it's, we give them the building, we should.
Right, so maybe those three people could show up next Monday? At least one or two.
Yes, we could ask them, I could certainly ask one of them to see it, one of the board, one of the members of the board could.
Yeah, that'd be a good place to start.
Yes, get them, if you can, let's get them here.
I can invite them.
Yes, just invite them, see if they come, see, we just talked today about, um, getting the senior centers taxes done. And who does, who does our taxes?
Yes.
Over there.
Who does them?
Joyce, something in North Grandville, Joyce.
Yeah.
Joy something, and it's her tax company.
We just don't know if it's too far, I don't know if that piece is too far gone, but we could get information and see what the next step is. I just think that there's.
And we need to find out first where we are, where they are.
Right, the community league lost it for two years, and we had to give it back. And it was, it was a bit, bit of a challenge.
A lot of paperwork.
Yes.
My paperwork I printed is pretty thick, yeah.
Okay, let's see if we can get it on the agenda for next Monday night, see if you can invite one of them to come.
Invite them, oh.
We can find out where they are, if there's a plan of action, or make a plan of action.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else, Paul?
No.
Anybody have any questions for Paul?
No, I didn't put this on the agenda, but can we put the farm-to-table dates in the record, that it's twenty twenty-four, July twentieth, and August twenty-four? If it's approved by the church, I just wanna make sure that the town, it'll go on the website and, uh.
Those are Saturdays?
Yeah, Saturday, July, July twentieth and August twenty-four. It's twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty-four, how's that?
Perfect planning.
And you'll get the insurance?
Oh, yeah, I do that like two weeks before Christmas, absolutely.
Okay.
I, I do have a question.
Oh, no.
On, on the zoning administration.
Uh huh.
We, we have approached the, what the New Orleans Catholic Church, and she agreed to look into it and to become a part of the zoning administration. It, it's on a very part-time basis.
She's part-time in Castleton?
Yes, she's, she's an engineer that works at Dartmouth. And she's looking to retire. She was trying to line up.
I see what name is it?
She's very much by the book. I have not met her lately.
Now, you want this, Paul?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Oh, shall we run it?
It's not thinking the, the budget moves.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't start until July.
Yes, yeah.
Well.
It was, it's, it's in the budget for this year. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Pursue that.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
And the DRB still needs another member. But from what I understand, it's gotta come to the town hall.
It, it's gonna be in the Lexington Free Press.
Look at that.
Um, although she didn't give me the date, but I, I have submitted it.
It's gonna be there, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you missing, did someone leave or?
Yes, yes.
Ask for that. That's right. Oh, that's right, he just got out, right?
He just got out, right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, anything else?
Nothing.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission? Sarah's pretty gone.
No, no.
She's fine, she's, she's. Hi Sarah, you're sneaking up on me. Um, anything on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
You're numb again.
Thank you. Um, so the, I just wanted to let the board know that the Regional Planning Commission is beginning, uh, some public engagement for an update of the regional plan. I think it's 2026 that the regional plan will be updated completely. Um, and they are relying on their regional commissioners, uh, to help with, uh, to help get the word out and to help with, uh, some engagement and, um, to identify some ways to interact with the community. So, um, the Regional Planning Commission, a few of the commissioner, or sorry, the staff will be at Stone Valley Arts, um, open mic night on January 26th. Um, it starts at seven, goes to 8:15. It's at Withy Hall at the Green Mountain Community School. Um, so the Regional Planning Commission will be hosting a pop-up there, um, to collect, uh, feedback for the regional plan from Pulteney. Um, and then the meeting is, the next meeting of the, um, commissioners is tomorrow and the TAC, uh, will be back to its normal schedule after the holidays next week.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sarah?
Hi. Yes.
Um, I've been noticing on Front Porch Forum that Devon Neary is putting out questionnaires. Is that the same, um, regional plan that you were just discussing?
Yes.
Feedback?
It is, yep, there is a survey that's online, um, that has been advertised on Front Porch Forum and, um, a few other, um, I think they're also maybe on Facebook, I'm not sure, but they've been advertising the survey in a few different places, so that is the same plan.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Sarah.
Sure thing, thanks.
Yeah. All right, I do have a, a charity announcement from the CUB that Pulteney, as part of the Communication District, we have reached the stage one level. I mean, the Pulteney is still going to be built out along with the rest. We don't have to wait second phase. And we have convinced, uh, Consolidated to offer every town a free Wi-Fi downtown. Because I know that we used to have it, but we don't have it anymore, right?
Yeah, we still have all the hotspots.
Yeah, from what I understand is from the businesses.
I'm told it's very weak.
It's very weak, it's only like 300 feet.
Right.
From their router around.
Right, that's what, that's what happened, and he's only who lost it too.
Well, they did because of the store, yeah, for the library. I mean, there are third places you could sit, Dunkin' Donuts, the library.
Right, right.
Consolidated is gonna have free Wi-Fi downtown?
At every town, right, so I'd like to know who, who to direct them to, is Sarah? Did she pay the good price for Paul? Um, it's generally more than that in the beginning.
I could direct them up here at Shohabul if you want to do that.
I, I know Megan, I know Megan O was involved, uh, kind of that only comes together initiative.
Um.
Yeah, she had the Wi-Fi.
No, I can, I can check with Megan. I think between Sarah, Megan and I, we can figure it out.
Okay, so I can put your name down?
Sure.
I mean, it's very free.
So what would that do to the, like, you would still have your hotspot here? Like I'm saying, I want to, if I don't get it at my house, which I don't really, I would go to the library, I would still have that hotspot, or you're saying I could pull up anywhere in town, get Wi-Fi?
I'd be led to believe.
For free without a password and just open.
It's gonna be a.
Senior Center was the hotspot.
Yeah.
Yeah, the senior center is a hotspot.
Have you signed? As we are. And many people stop in our parking lot.
Yes, yeah, very busy.
Yeah.
Get it off there, your senior center off my truck.
Yeah. So how come they're, how come they're doing it all downtown?
I don't.
Except like.
I just put a couple of repeaters up and hit it. But it'll be an unsecured Wi-Fi network. I wouldn't do my banking on that.
That's what I'm wondering, so that, when, when are they gonna venture out to all the, all the rural areas?
Next, they, they're gonna start in April.
Isn't this April coming up?
Yes, April 24th is the start for the build.
In town or outside of town?
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Every, April 24th. Is Consolidated the one that would meet the deal?
Yeah. All right.
So everybody can, can tell them have fiber optics.
Megan will be.
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
Good.
Yeah, we've been through all the hurdles and a lot of money has been spent.
That's why they said they wouldn't do it, the content, we just had three polls down, that's all that came in, like.
They're gonna make so many, many dollars.
Are they going to eventually come looking for?
Money, no.
Financing from the town?
No financing from the town.
That's not the difference.
None, zero, zeros.
That surprises me.
Yes, huh? You say that for two years?
I know, still very surprised. Okay.
Okay.
Very good, man, thank you.
And the DNH rail trail is, were about to incorporate it with a representative from every town. And that's, yeah, that's going to be, I got Mark Brown to join from Castleton. Yeah, from, couldn't get anybody from Mark. And we haven't chosen anybody yet for Pulteney, but.
Were you incorporating it?
Well, every town is going to have a representative.
For the DNH rail trail?
Yeah.
I thought that was, that was owned by the state.
It still, still will be owned, but we get to, and to intersect in more projects. Yeah.
Oh, that's something interesting.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because it, it, it isn't going to be joined in with the other one, but that's way far.
Okay.
Yeah, but it starts in, in, in Castleton. And it's going to be, you know, more benches, clean up like, like, like I know done by Terrance. There is issue there with, with the Beaver Dam, it overflowed. Everybody works it.
Yep, we do, we just did the other day.
Right, is it still overflowing? Right, right, so we, we need to.
It's been reported.
Hmm?
It's been reported.
It has been, good, yeah, yeah.
They're usually pretty good about getting.
Right, so this, this, Nick Stark is heading it up for, for the town.
Okay.
Right, nobody has been chosen yet as far as Pulteney goes, I, I don't think.
Okay.
All right, so, all right, so that is moving along.
Are they gonna have a meeting and look for representatives, is that gonna, or you know?
Yeah, yeah, do you want?
How would you notify people that it's gonna be?
I would be interested in that. I'd be very interested in that.
Caitlin has been on two, two of our meetings.
I'm gonna wait till I go.
Yeah.
That's not the same one, Sarah, that's not the same one you were just on, Sarah, right?
Um, no, it's a different, um, council, that, it's a new council that the RPC is forming. I went to the first meeting, but I haven't been to the other meetings.
For the, for the DNH?
Yeah, the Rail Trail Council.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, because I noticed down here, just, we were down, we walked in New York the other day.
Right, yes.
And more of the benches down there are starting to.
Be picked apart?
Yeah, yeah, there's things I'm noticing on it.
Yeah.
Gates missing down here, somebody took it completely out.
Yes, yes, right. It, it does need some local influence to keep up the, the quality of it. Right, so sorry, are there two councils being formed?
No.
Talking about the same thing, right?
We're talking about the same thing.
Good, okay, right.
That's something I'd be interested in, because I'm on that a lot.
Yeah, 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 I do work the whole thing.
Um, not quite all the way to Castleton, but to Route 30 and back, yes.
But no, no, I mean to Rupert.
Oh, no, no, I don't dare go across New York.
You can, it, it's okay.
No, he doesn't like people on his property, I'm not, I'm not going on his property.
So who's, who's, that's back to you again, that's Blacktop?
Uh, he's a farmer right out here on the flats.
Yeah.
In Little Graham, Illinois.
It's a quarry that has blocked the water.
Yeah. I don't know.
No, no, he doesn't own it though. I've, I've, I've clarified, New York State owns the rail trail. They don't have the homies to enforce it, but, but they're working on it.
Hey, all right, is that it?
That's it.
Onto public comments and concerns, anybody's got anything? Hi.
Yeah.
All right, we don't have board orders to sign.
But it was.
But you got the liquor license to sign.
It was done.
I didn't see them out there.
I could have looked at them.
Okay.
Usually puts them on the table.
Yeah, the blow, hold it. Yeah, it's pretty quick.
So we'll do executive session on Monday?
Yeah, if we don't have to immediately go into it tonight. Did everybody get the printout of the?
Stabilization.
Tax stabilization? If you didn't get it.
They're gonna give you minutes. Oh, you know. No.
And also the 2023 equalization study results.
Oh, yes, I got it, and, uh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I got some.
Oh, thank you.
I look back.
Again? Oh, you did look. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, do we hear a motion to sign the board orders?
Give it to me.
Any second, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion Carry. Do we need to go into executive session tonight? Or do you want to go in Monday night for, because not everybody's got the tax stabilization back, um.
Maybe we will?
Alvin, get it?
I got it.
You got it? Did you get it?
Yeah.
Or do we need to go in tonight?
I mean, we can wait till next Monday if you want.
Let's go in next Monday, they'll give us time to read it and get, we'll get you on and get you to read it.
Sorry, I'm gonna make sure it's a great email.
I'm happy to hear we got that merger coming along.
Question?
Sure.
What is that grant cover for the merger, is that to study it?
The study.
Yeah.
The study, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul or Sarah, the merger grant will do the study and we can, um, hire a consultant to help us. And the consultant would help the committee that the town and, and village would form. It doesn't have to be board members.
No, you look at that.
You're looking for people in the village and the town, you know, just, you don't have to be a board member. You can just get on the committee if you wish. Pretty much the same thing we did when we hired Paul. When we were looking for a town manager, we had a committee, but we also invited the public to come to the meet, to the interviews, to help interview the town manager. Is that something I just don't think should stay on the board? Like the more people that are involved in town, you know, the better it's understood. But that's basically for, it would be for a consultant and probably for working stuff. All right, I guess if we don't need to go in, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
They don't want to do, to do that.
Somebody wants to go? A second. All in favor? Any opposed? We're done.